Thank everyone for coming out tonight. It's, uh, it's good to see you. I mean, it really is. And, um, we're all in this together and I can assure you that we're working hard for you. We've been working on this, our budget. And what I'll announce at this time is, you know, we advertised the $25 million budget of this county. Uh, but we have got it down to 24,000, 24,400. And, uh, but I know most of the concerns here tonight is about assessments. Is that correct? And, um, so...
No, it's way more than that. Way more than that.
So, but we do have our chief tax appraiser here, Zach Smith. Uh, he, uh, we will ask him to come up and, uh, and speak. And then, uh, we have, we have some form of questions that Commissioner Farmer will ask. And some of these questions might take up what your questions are and you will get the answers. Besides you coming up having to ask, so... But anyone that's signed up, we ask, you come up, we feel free to speak. We just want to keep everything peaceful and, uh, and just talk normal. And, uh, we'll ask. I mean, and that's our number one goal, to be peaceful tonight. And, uh, and we will get all the questions answered. Uh, we will be here until the last question's asked. If it's not asked through Commissioner Farmer's asking, because he's going to ask some questions that we all have. And, uh, so at this time, I'll ask Zach to come up to the podium and, um...
For the budget public hearing? You do have to ask if there's, there's any discussion on the budget itself right now for your commissioners.
Is there any questions on the budget, the county budget itself?
I think it'd just be for us to discuss the budget at this point, um, before we turn it over to public comment. But I think one of the things that we've talked, I don't, can y'all hear us back there? I don't know if it's working back there or not. Um, I have a tendency to talk loud, so I can do so if needed. Um, having, whoa. Having said that, um, I, I think what Chairman Walker said a minute ago, um, that 24, uh, four number that he's discussed, I, I do want everybody to be aware that it's not necessarily a final number. There are further discussions we've been having even as of tonight to, to bring that down even further. Um, so having said that, um, is there, I didn't know if there's any other discussion that we could have tonight. Obviously, we're not adopting the budget tonight. That's not something that we'll do tonight. That'll be something that's done at the regular meeting, um, which if I recall, I believe that's July the 2nd. Is that the right? Is it the 1st? July the 1st? Okay.
July 1st.
That would be the, the, the next, uh, that would be the regular session we would have. Um, any other discussion on the board on that, the budget? Now, this time, I, I'm sure, uh, like Chairman Walker said, most of y'all are here probably about the assessment. I know there's probably some other questions, but, uh, we kind of touched on some of this the other night. Um, and so I kind of wanted to ask Zach some of the similar questions for those of y'all that weren't here. Um, first, Zach, I'll just ask you the same question. Does our board control anything that you do in any way? Do we tell you what to raise the assessments to, what to value property, how to do it, and who to do it to?
In no wise.
Okay. Um, having said that, I, I did want to talk about, uh, House Bill 581, because I know that, that plays a large role in what you've done. Um, and correct me if I'm wrong as I go through this, but it... Yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to. If any of y'all, if I ever start yelling at y'all or talking too fast, just stand up and tell me to slow down and be quiet. I'd be happy to. Um, with House Bill 581, Zach, obviously that created a, a floating homestead exemption. And so, am I correct in telling people from county tax purposes, their assessed value is not based off the value that they received on this year's tax? It is tied to the 2024 assessed value. And that is what the actual value that they will be taxed on. So it would not have mattered for county purposes, because the county, what, we did what you call opted in, as did all of the cities. That ties that value to 2024. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So it wouldn't have mattered if you raised everybody's property value to $10 million for county purposes. Whatever you were, whatever your assessed value last year, that's what you're being taxed on. I, I'm going to get there. Sir, I think you're going to like the en... I think you're going to like the answer that I give you if you're... Having said that, the base, since we as a county government opted into House Bill 581 with that floating homestead exemption, if you have a homesteaded property, your base value is tied to 2024, correct?
That is correct.
And so moving forward, year after year, the assessed value of that home is tied to the inflation number, correct?
Correct.
So you're not going to have, it would not matter if it was 400 this year and you went up to 800 next year and 1.2 million the year after. That's not what people for county tax purpose are going to be assessed at, correct?
That is correct.
It will be a 400,000 valuation plus year over year, whatever that inflation number, which I would imagine is probably going to be a 1% to 3% increase in overall assessed value.
Correct.
Is that accurate? Okay. So I, again, what I'm trying to say, and my understanding, and I appreciate Zach for clarifying that, your home property value for county purposes, taxable value, is not per se the number that you received on your evaluation. Now, I cannot speak to the school system, because the school si... We have no con... We have no control over what the school board does. Because they are a complete and distinct separate political entity. They have their own school board. We are not legally allowed to do that under state law. We do not have any con... We're a distinct... I would...
Yeah, you said, you said be quiet.
I'm trying to explain something very simple. I didn't say shut up at all.
So, so I will, I will tell you.
Hold on, Chairman. Let me just finish where I was going.
Go ahead.
We have no control over the school board. We have no control over the school system. There are school, there are school board members that are elected just like we do. They are the one... And again, the county opted into, uh, House Bill 581, which means for your county tax purposes, if you have a $200,000 home on the 2024 tax evaluations, your tax bill for this year is going to be on that same assessed value for county tax purposes. And next year... So you're tw... Yes, yes. For, for county tax purposes, you, of course, if you look at your tax bill, I don't know if you live in the city or if you're in an unincorporated... Yes, yes. So in the, so obviously you don't pay any cities. Okay. So what I'm trying to say is for county tax purposes, you...
This is very subtle. You, you're talking to all your dollars. Can I understand that? We don't know about county tax assessment. Give me a second. My tax bill went from $588,000 to $1.2 million. All right. They give me a bill saying my taxes, don't care who it's going to, but Scoob, y'all, all of them, I don't care. My taxes go up from $4,000 in '23, $6,000 in '24, and that's $13,000 for '25, my assessed value. Now, every year I've got one of them little forms, come be simple one, whatever's on that little form I get is what I have to pay. So my question may not even be to y'all, it's to him. Why is my plan going up from $588,000 to $1.2 million when all I've done is three loads of gravel and a $12,000 shed?
And sir, if I could, if, if... If I could just finish going, because I think you had a question about you, there's a lot, what's the difference between county taxes and school? We adopt a county millage rate, and our county millage rate is eight mils. Okay. That county millage rate, for, for what we calculate that eight mils off of, your value of your home is going to be, you'll be taxed that same eight mils on last year's tax rate. So not the one point... It will go up with inflation. So you would see an in, you would see an increase... There are national inflation numbers, sir, that that would... No, I don't make those numbers. I'd like to give y'all some answers to the questions, and I, and I know Zach's going to have a lot of these answers, but if I could finish trying to address this gentleman's questions that relates to the difference in taxes. So yes, that new assessed value, because the school system did not opt into House Bill 581. They did not opt in. So yes, that assessed value will impact the amount you paid to the school system, because they did not opt in, or they opted out. We opted in. So the value, when it comes to your county taxes, is going to stay the same as it was this year and will incrementally rise probably along the lines of 2% year over year, not for the school purpose. So obviously... I, I... Because that's not... Because that's not what the law says, sir. I, I'd, I'd ask you about that question was, as it relates to Zach. Yes, sir.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. Same. Yes, sir. Now, for those type, I was just trying to address that, the question as it relates to that House bill and what that means for your assessed value for county purposes. When it comes to the actual increase in value that you saw for your actual property, I, I'd ask you to ask those questions for Zach. And before we get into the individuals, because I know everybody's property, mine included, everybody's property assessed value went up. Obviously, some more than others. It may have gone up 20 thou... I, again, what, that's the first question? So...
Well, all of this boils down to Zach, what he thinks this stuff's worth. Is that correct?
And if that was going to be the, that, when I finished asking that gentleman his question, trying to answer his question, the next question I was going to ask Mr. Smith is can you please describe for everybody? Because I think everybody here has the same question. Obviously, it's different numbers, because we have different houses, but everybody has the same question. How did you come to these values? And that's the question I'm asking, and that's the question I'm asking him to answer now, because that, that's... So Zach, can you please tell everybody here how you come up with the values for, for properties? Because that's, that's the question.
The central formula to understand when it comes to property valuation is replacement cost new, less depreciation, plus land value equals your fair market value. The three components to that equation, again, are replacement cost new, depreciation...
Say that one more time.
Absolutely. Replacement cost new, less depreciation, so subtract depreciation. Finishing the equation, add the land value. And that equals the fair market value. The question that we're looking at with replacement cost new is we have to go through and figure out what properties are being built for. What is the cost per square foot to build a new home? Then, the next part of that question is to also ask, what is depreciation? Depreciation is any loss in value that is ultimately determined by the market. In that part of the equation, you may be looking at physical depreciation, which is the general lifespan of a home. The average lifespan of a home is generally understood to be 55 years. So that's calculating the physical depreciation. However, in the lifespan of a home, you may wind up adding a new roof. That may actually add to the effective age of the house, whereas the house may have been built in 1950.
Hey guys, if we could just let...
To the house, you actually begin to increase what the effective age of the house is. And that is upkeep, and that's factored into the physical depreciation of the property. You also find that when we're looking at it, we look at functional depreciation.
Please, let's let Zach, please let Zach talk.
Is there an element of the house which is functionally causing functional depreciation? Was the house designed in such a way that is no longer accepted in the current market? A good example of that would be fuse boxes. Used to, we had fuse boxes in houses. Now we have circuit breakers. That is an element of functional depreciation.
Please, sir.
Hey guys, listen. My name's Drew Fowler, and y'all have been great to me since I've been in this community, right? My law has been out here for 30 something odd years. I'm just like y'all. My property tax went up 159.8%, right? My father-in-law's property went up 1.2 million dollars. I've got a bunch of questions too, but I can't hear them, and I can't even hear him answer them, because we've got all these side conversations, and, and we just keep, we keep asking the same questions. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I might ask the commissioner, why every time y'all need money to attack our homes? There's other means. You could put a sales tax in this county. We work hard for 30 years. We pay enough. We pay interest on it. And now we're being taxed so high that we possibly don't lose it. So I would look at other options to tax a sales tax, 15 cents, 27, what it needed to do it, and let's give away with home taxes.
Yes, sir. Now, listen, I'm not them, right? But this is just what, we're getting so far sidetracked. Because this, I think there was some misunderstanding on Facebook, right? Social media does that sometimes.
Please let him talk.
Why is the Sheriff's Department answering for the county commissioner?
Well, I'm not, I'm not the Sheriff's Department, sir. I'm the county marshal.
Oh, I'm sorry, dog catcher is what you said. I heard that. I heard it. I'm not playing. I'm done. I'm done. I'm done. I worked all my life to get what I got. I worked for it. I, I drive out of this county every day to afford to live in this county. And that don't even work anymore. I'm done, gentlemen. That's where I'm at. Do what you got to do. I'm going to do what I got to do. That's where we're at.
Can I get back to the original point when we started talking about this? If I could, let me, let, let me ask a few questions if I can. I, I, look, we all understand houses go up and inflation goes up, but I, I, I don't recall...
Social Security does not go up by trend inflation. You can talk, Laura, you can talk all you want. I swear to God, I will talk that with you. Let's have that discussion. Let's have it right here in front of everybody. I'm willing. I'm, I'm able right now.
Can I ask how many folks had an issue with their property value last year in 2024?
I did.
Okay. Because I don't recall a ton of people coming in from last year, but I know it went up a lot this year, and I get that. I get that. I get that. But what I'm trying to explain is I understand this year, this year, again, this is a board that does not dictate what your property values go up. We are not raising the millage rate. We are not...
This is the part where you point the finger at somebody else, they point the finger at somebody else, and everybody points the finger at this third party. I don't care. I don't care anymore.
Do you want us to give you answers?
This is where I'm at. I'm done. Y'all do what you got to do. Do it right here in front of all these folks right here. That's what I'm saying.
All right. Next.
You can tell me whatever you want to. I don't care. I didn't sell my property. If we were talking about stock and that something went up $250,000, then what happened?
All right.
Unrealized capital gain. Not on me, sir.
What I'm trying to say is your value from last year... Sir, I think you had a question, and I, and I apologize for standing up. I couldn't see you, sir, in the green shirt. I, I thought you had a question a few minutes ago about the property values. Yes, what, what I'm trying to say, and if I, if I could address you... Hey, sir, can you, can, can you just give him a minute to walk out? Because I don't think people can, if you'll just give him a second to... Yes, sir. I understand.
I understand y'all got to have so much in it. I urge you to look for different ways besides home.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, and, and to your point, what you mentioned earlier is other revenue streams. Is that, I think that was one of the things that you brought up. Yes, sir. I understand.
That's what's killing me.
I understand.
But we can't afford that. There was a lady up here on, first last week, I happened upon. Another lady was with, she was crying, tears running down, this woman was high. And I asked her, I said, are you all right, ma'am? The lady with her said, I, I'm 47 years old. I've got two kids. I work two jobs, and I'm going to look for a home. We cannot put people out of their homes over damn taxes on their property. We just can't do that.
I don't disagree with you, sir, and if I could talk one of those revenue streams with you. One of the things that that bill that we opted in, and, and I want to remind everyone, the county and the cities opted into this to prevent exactly what the school, and, and I'm, I'm not trying to throw shade at the school. I know there's probably a lot of angst towards the school board in this room, and I understand that. But we opted into this so that exactly what you saw in your assessed value wouldn't happen when it came to your county taxes. Wouldn't happen when it came to your city taxes. And we did that so that this exact issue would not hurt those. You're not going to see a major increase, if an increase at all, in your property tax bill for the county tax purposes. Now, you will see one. I'm not going to lie to you. You will see one for the school tax purposes, because they did not opt into that. That would, all I'd have to tell you on that, sir, is you'd have to ask the school board.
Hang on. Hang on just a second.
You'd have to ask the school board, because again, we're, we have zero control.
House, House Bill 581, guys, we all voted to put it in. And... I don't, listen, the, yes, House, no.
No, no.
So the state, when the state put House Bill 581 out, we voted it in.
Yes.
When, that was one of the first meetings I had to attend when I come in in January. And I made sure that we all were going to stay in it, because the people voted on it. And that 581, do I understand the whole, I, I don't. I've been trying to understand it. State law. State, the state law and the state school board. They...
The state protects the school system.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Your, your assessed value for 2024 is going to be the same assessed value that you're taxed on this year.
And, so...
Yes, yeah, for county, for county. That's not a...
Can...
That, that's not a bill. You're, yeah, yeah, but what I... Yes, sir. It's because it's basing it off of that new assessed value. But what I'm telling you for your county tax purposes, last year's assessed value is what you'll be taxed on for your county. And I don't know if you live in a city. All of the cities in this county opted in. So I live in the city of Tallapoosa, so my city taxes, so my, my assessed value for city and county taxes is going to be what it was last year. Now, your school taxes, as we have all talked about, you know, quite a bit tonight, that is going to be different, and that is going to be based on the new assessed value. Yes, ma'am. Because that is something that, yes, the Board of Assessors makes in terms of valuation. And I would ask you, you know, when it comes to the, to the school tax issue, they made the decision to opt out of that. We made the decision to opt in to prevent this... As much, as much as you can. Yes, sir.
I can tell you, I can tell you that... Okay, I want to finish. I'm going by order. You're, answer your question. The Tax Assessors Board is appointed by interested people that wants to be on it, and we do appoint them from the Board of Commissioners. Is that right? Board of Equaliz...
We don't have one right now. We don't have one.
No, I'm talking about the, no, no. The Assessor, the Assessors Board is appointed by this standing commissioner.
Is appointed by her, right?
No.
And, and I would like to just say one more thing.
And the next, I mean, finish this answer. The Equalization Board is appointed, they apply for it. An individual, anybody can apply to be on the Equalization Board, and the grand, uh, uh, the grand jury approves that, okay? Yes. Now, I will go ahead and announce, two, uh, years ago, the Board of Commissioners did vote, we pulled it up, they did vote to add two more people to the Board of Assessors. So if anyone in here is interested in being on the Board of Assessors...
I think we may have a lot of applicants for that.
Listen. Hang on. Hang on. I'm, I'm, we're announcing this tonight. So you can, if you are interested in being, looked at being appointed to the Board of Assessors, get with your district commissioner and let them know. Next.
Yes, sir.
Do what? The Board of Assessors hires everybody in the Assessor's office, okay? Next, um, okay, I've, I got one, but, can I get the, the gentleman behind you was first? Next, um, okay, I've, I got one, can I get the gentleman behind you was first?
I'm gonna make this really short, we can talk numbers, we can talk law. Bottom line is when you're basically putting your people in service to you, and the law isn't serving the people, it's your guys' job to fix it. I don't care if that's a school board, I don't care if that's an assessor's office, you are our county commissioners. Do what you gotta do and represent your people.
But the Board of Commissioners has absolutely zero say with anything to do with the school system, school board members, superintendent, the governor of the state took that power out of every one of our hands when he allowed the Board of Education or the Board to elect their own superintendent. So there's your problem right there, but that's, that's for the people to go to them. I have no idea.
Hang on just-
Sir, go ahead.
Everybody's concerned about talking about school, 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 fourteen, nine percent. I don't like that neither, but the problem, nobody complained when it was fourteen percent, when your taxes was three hundred dollars. But now when they raise it to over a thousand dollars, mine goes from five eighty to four, or one point two million dollars. Now I've got a big problem with that four, fourteen, fourteen percent. I don't care if the county's getting it, the fire department, the waste department, who's getting fourteen percent, four percent? My problem is now you've raised fourteen point two percent on another six to seven hundred thousand dollars. That's where the problem is. And Brian says, well, we're gonna lower the millage rate. What's going to millage rate gonna, if you lower, if you knock out the whole four and a half percent, what's that gonna have me on six hundred thousand dollars? So my question is to you, then how all of a sudden this year did you decide, or whoever decided to raise everybody's three or four hundred percent? That's the problem, that simple formula ain't too simple. Our cost of living raise, when you work at a local place, you get a six to ten percent raise, okay? Six to ten percent raise across the board. My taxes go at three hundred percent. I got four percent raise at my job, so how am I gonna compensate that over three hundred thousand? My grandma's got a house, they got a letter in the mail saying that because of estimated tax increases this year, her escrow's going to three hundred dollars a month. So I understand raising a little bit time with the cost of inflation or not, but why aren't three hundred percent-
Yes, ma'am, so that's a formula that's actually designated to us. That's a formula that's designated to us through the appraisal procedure manual. The appraisal procedure manual is that which is issued by the Department of Revenue and signed off on by the Revenue Commissioner. So we're actually held to this standard of how we value properties. So what we're looking at, going back to that, the components that we looked at this year were the replacement cost new. What does it cost to build a new house? That's part of the formula. Again, the other part that we looked at was depreciation. What is the loss in value on this property? What is the market telling us the loss in value on these properties is? And again, we compared that to last year's sales data to figure out what the central tendencies were. But the other component about it was, and I understand there's a lot of landowners with a lot of land in here, and I understand that you saw significant increase in there as well. We revalued land as well. The other part that I must articulate for everyone is, there is the appeals process. Many of you I have walked, I have watched walk through the door, and you have gone through the appeals process. I promise you, on each and every one of these, we are going to look at these properties. If you appeal the property, we will again look at the property value and make sure that we- Yes, ma'am. Twice the size of mine, it's assessed at a hundred and forty, and its assessment only went up forty thousand dollars from last year to this year. Explain that to me for God's sake.
Can you explain that, Zach? Zach, he's asked it a couple times, can you, got an explanation?
In order to answer your question fully, I will have to look at those same three components on both your property and that property to be able to determine. I'm not going to give you an uninformed answer without looking at your property value first.
Five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, and that one like a hundred thousand dollars more.
Yes, sir, and if you- No, sir, our appraisers go inspect properties physically, once every three years, we are supposed to be on your property. We have reached roughly sixty-two percent of the county within the last year and a half, and we continue to seek to, and yes, sir, I understand, you had a question for me earlier.
Yeah.
Okay, when you come out there to my property-
Yes.
Would you mind putting, if I got pictures of it, I'll show you where all that raw crap covered my whole pasture.
Yes, sir.
All the way around my barn up to the edge of it.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell me how you assessed my property going up, and it's so good?
Did you, did you appeal? Did you appeal your property value?
My field like they were supposed to, they lied to me, and did nothing. They come down there and had a meeting with me, and I said, and I knew what my rights were, I done called EPD and wrong, cars bill. And I said, I'm on my field. Oh, we did, one of the workers happened to be up there at the manhole, and said, come down here. He said, we lying right here, we lying this way. I said, that's why I'm upset. You tell me my property, it weren't all that much more now, when raw sewage is subject to run out on it at any moment, that's what I don't understand.
That may be-
I know there was some question, Mr. Church, I think you had a question a second ago, and then we can start kinda working our way across the room, so.
This lady right here had her hand up for a long time.
Jared, Mr. Church had his up, and then ma'am, we'll go to you, if that works.
So, the Board of Commissioners appoints the Board of Assessors. So anytime can you recall those appointees, or is it a set term?
Six years.
But you can't recall them at any time, it's set, once they're in place, they're set, you can't recall the Board of Assessors. That's my next question, if I can finish.
Well, what was the last part of your question?
Yeah.
I heard that, you said you had a last part of the question, but I didn't hear it.
How, how long ago did you take this position?
January of twenty twenty-four.
And what did you do prior to this?
I was a fee appraiser by trade.
Okay, and how long did you do that?
I was there for roughly five years.
For five years, so you built a house last year, and it's appraised at a hundred dollars a square foot, it's branded-
The certificate of occupancy on that house came in April of twenty twenty-five.
It was still worth, mid-construction, it's worth more than a hundred dollars a square foot.
The date- The date evaluation in the state of Georgia is January one. We have to look at what the percent complete was on January one of any new construction property. In that case, in this case, it was seventy-five percent complete on January one of twenty twenty-five. The appraisal procedure manual then dictates that we have for construction in progress, a point seven modifier. So if you want to see what the property valuation would be on that property, you would actually divide by point seven five, then by point seven five again, in order to determine-
What you've appraised others' houses at, and you have a second property on that, you have second dwelling on there, whether it needs work on or not. You can, you, there's a burnt house that sold for eighty thousand dollars on a half acre that needed completely remodeled, so regardless, you're at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on five and a half acres with a brand new house and a second dwelling. And now you're talking about these calculations, and you're trying to talk your way through it. Most of these people don't even understand your calculations, and it's dodging the questions. But the simple fact is, there needs to be a standard for what everybody's homes are being valued at. If it's ten years old, it's this per square foot. If it's this old, it's this. I've got, I've got, I've got three and a half acres in, in Harrellson County that you valued at ninety-eight thousand dollars. Then I've got six acres that you valued at seventy-two thousand dollars, it's not even buildable. It's an floodplain. I mean, they're, they're all over the place, so the calculation isn't work-
In both of these situations, we need to make sure that the property data is correct. In the case of yours not being buildable, we need to make sure that that's correct in our system. In the case of sewage, we need to make sure that that is also correct in our system.
So your office is gonna be open twenty-four hours a day?
Eight to five, Monday through Friday.
No, 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 you're gonna be open twenty-four hours a day, right?
We're open Monday through Friday, eight to five.
If you're not service the whole frigging county, you need to be open twenty-four hours a day, because I got a job, I have to do. I can't just take off my job anytime I want to, to come see you.
Ma'am, what was your question right here?
Right here, ma'am, hang on, I'm-
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. We are required by law to be on your property once every three years. We in the last year and a half-
Listen, let him answer her question.
We acknowledge that there are properties that have not been reviewed-
Hey, hey, guys-
Hey, let him answer his question.
We either gonna have come and order, or, or we out. And we're not gonna sit here and be, have personal attacks on Zach or anybody else. We're not gonna attack you personally, and we don't want you attacking us personally. We've asked you to be orderly, and I appreciate the gentleman back there raising his hand, I appreciate you, ma'am, raising your hand. But I don't appreciate everybody just talking when they want to, so please restrain him, thank you.
Sir, I think you were your next hand up.
Are you?
Oh, I, I didn't, I apologize. Yeah, go ahead, Zach.
Go ahead, get your answer.
We acknowledge there are properties that have not been reviewed within the last three years, and if that is the case, we are working to get those reviewed before we finalize your appeal.
Okay. I've got, these have been, there are two right here, and then I'm going to you, and then I'm going to the back.
Yes, ma'am, and if those properties- So we did review for countywide, we reviewed every component in terms of replacement cost new, less depreciation factors, and land values countywide, we did do that. Now, when it comes to looking at your property specifically, we're assuming that what we have in our system is correct. In the case, it sounds like this gentleman understandably has a very good point. We probably didn't know that about sewage on that property. That's actually an environmentally sensitive issue that we probably don't have on that property, that through the process of appeal, or every year from January one to April one, we have what's called a taxpayer return, that you can fill out and inform us of that information. That's probably something we didn't know, because we weren't there when it happened in that moment. And if we come out to your property on a bright, beautiful day, we're not likely to see the consequences of that on your property. But if it's something that you inform us on, then we're able to correct that information on that property.
Well, could we kinda go this way, and not, and then we can kinda work back across?
Did that finish your question, ma'am? Did you file an appeal with our office? Did you submit that as part of it? We'll take a look at all of it, I promise you that.
Alright, right here, sir.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I was listening to some of your explanations on the fifty-five year old house that you, you say, you've been at fifty-five years. Uh, it's worth nothing at fifty-five, is that, is that what I understand?
That would be the theory of it, however, we also understand that in the process of a property, you may replace the roof, you may do improvements to that property that continue the effective life of it.
The reason I say that is I've got a building, uh, that's on my property, that I've done nothing to.
Yes, sir.
Nothing's been done to it for probably a hundred years, and I've been paying taxes on it for forty years. It's, it's, it's worth nothing. Why am I paying taxes on nothing?
That's another element that when we process that appeal, we will look and make sure that that data is correct. And if it is incorrect, we will correct and send you a lower value on that property, that I assure you.
There was somebody back, yes.
One in the blue.
Yes, sir, my family's been in this county for seven generations.
Sir.
We are required by law to be on your property once every three years. Before I took my job, we had not been to over ten thousand properties since before January of twenty twenty. We were well under where we were supposed to be. We have in the last year and a half reached over sixty-two percent of the properties. We're still working to correct this problem. And if you do file an appeal, and we haven't been out to your property in the last three years, we are making it our goal to make sure we lay eyes on your property before we process that value, and we do that all through the appeals process.
So I'm curious how you came up with the value, it's a ninety-six single, my dad, he passed last year, it was left to me. It was valued at sixty-two thousand. Now it's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. The pictures on there's from two thousand and-
Yes, sir.
That's a long time, that's not three years.
I, I agree, and that is something we are working diligently to correct.
A ninety-six model, single wide, why should I be paying taxes as a replacement, new value? That, I mean, it's a ninety-six model, you know what I mean?
Yes, so that's where we're looking again, when it comes to replacement cost new, less depreciation. What we're trying to figure out is the depreciation on that property. In exactly the situation that you described to me, it sounds like something is off on the depreciation factor on that property. And that's absolutely, if you have filed an appeal with our office, that is something we're gonna look at and make sure is corrected in the system.
So how did you send me this assessment if you haven't been there to assess it?
Yes, so that's where, again, we looked at last year, when we looked at all the property sales, and we found where we were. We are mass appraisers, we look at the central tendencies on these properties, and then we have to apply those based on those central tendencies, looking at what the depreciation based on those central tendencies are. Then we have the appeals process to where you're able to come into our office, file an appeal, and we'll walk through that process as well.
We shouldn't have to be every person in the county filing an appeal.
Absolutely, absolutely.
How many people cannot make it there? How many people, like this guy just said, I worked in Atlanta, I've worked there twenty-six years, I quit my job today. I'm tired of going to Atlanta, trying to make a living to live in this county. After twenty-six years, I'm done going out of the county trying to make money, I mean, I'm done with it. It's ridiculous.
But you did come look at my shop.
Yes, ma'am, I, I don't know if I've told him- In order to-
Stand up, that's all I'm doing.
We were looking at central market tendencies on that, but in order to fully give you a better answer, we'll pull that property, and we'll take a look at it if the property is appealed. They were out to make sure that the property facts were correct. Now, the valuations were not decided in that moment, the valuations were decided at a different time. However, if you appeal that property, we'll look at it again, see where we got it wrong, see where we got it right, and then we'll issue a corrective notice if we lower that value.
Gentlemen in the black hat, I know you've had your hand up for a while.
Then we're going back right there, you'll be next, and then, y'all too, yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Yeah. Yes, sir, so we will look at that property, if you file an appeal, I'll look at the property to make sure that the floodplain data on that property is accurate, and we'll take another look at floodplain ridden properties, see what their sales values are, see what adjustments we need to make. We did look at that this year to figure out what properties in a floodplain were generally selling for, and that was applied on the land schedule. But when you appeal your property, we'll take another look at it, I promise you.
Okay.
Hey, guys, if they're in the back, we cannot hear the answer that he's giving.
I, I'm-
Give him a minute to answer.
You, and then you, go, one more.
I got two of them, one in St. Edmund and one in Tallapoosa.
Yes, sir.
We're ignoring the major thing here, the average income in Harrellson County, I saw here recently, it said sixty-five, when I moved down here a year ago, it said forty-eight. You're raising these people's taxes so high, they can't handle, is the county and the city and the state just trying to run poor people out, and old people won't fit, things comes out? Is that what's going on? I'm asking a question, I'm not trying to insult, I'm just asking a question.
That's the truth, that's the truth, he's right on that.
When looking at your land value, when looking at your land value, if it doubled from last year to this year, that's because when we redid our land valuations, when we looked at what they were selling for, we updated the land schedules, and that's what we found on the central tendency. Again, there may be something unique about your property that we're missing, and we can handle through an appeal.
Can I reply to that?
Yes, sir.
What you're trying to do is tax off unrealized income. Bottom line, period, industry-
If I may answer-
You may sell your property for two hundred thousand, if you sell it for two hundred thousand, we won't earn fourteen percent. That ain't there's a fourteen percent in the house. People bought the property, they maintained the property, they don't owe the frigging government their frigging profit off of.
Amen, I agree. Alright, next, right here, then the-
I had a sense to come out last year.
Yes sir.
Okay, I had added a little building, my taxes went up from about a hundred percent.
Yes.
Okay, this year, nothing's been added, nothing's been changed, it went up about a hundred and fifty percent.
Yes sir.
Now how did that happen from a hundred and fifty this year to, it don't make no sense, the numbers don't make sense.
Yes sir. One thing I can assure you is if you file an appeal on that property, we will look at those specific details on that property. Again, we did what's called a mass reevaluation through mass appraisal principles. That's how that was determined.
No, him, and then.
Understand that through your appeal, we're able to consider the facts of your property better.
Yes sir, in the gray polo.
Alright.
I have two more questions.
I, oh. Yeah, sure.
The value something's worse than what it itself.
Yes sir.
And so to say a fair market value, when you've got other comps, when we make the appeal, and you helped me out tremendously last year, you're awesome last year, for me personally. When we bring you those comps, whether it's from Zillow, whether it's from other real estate agents, which you are a real estate agent, it'd be a great time to pass your business cards out and get some comps for you, would you lower the appraised value to what is selling?
I promise you, we will look at all of that data. Now, I can't, I can't promise you that we'll accept it, but I promise you we'll look at that data.
Second part question is how many appeals do we get and in what time?
Yes sir.
Because if I make them personally, my house went up about sixty percent. It's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars more on your appraisals than what is sitting dormant, two houses up for the last nine months.
Yes sir.
Which is fine, but I know that's not fair market value.
Yes sir, I understand.
So if you come back and you said, alright, your house is five fifty, I'm like, eh, it ain't even four hundred. How many times do I get to go back and forth with you until we get to that reasonable number? And what is the limit in time that we can do that?
Absolutely. First of all, notices of assessment were mailed on June sixth of twenty twenty-five. That means the final day to file an appeal is July twenty-one. July twenty-one is the initial, is the final initial period.
Initial period.
That's the initial period. What we will do next is we're going to look at these appeals. We will send you likely one of two options. We will either send you a second notice that lowers the valuation of the property, or we would send you a second notice of no change of value. If we send you a notice of no change in value, it immediately goes to the appeals administrator to be scheduled with the Board of Equalization. The appeals administrator in this case is the Clerk of Court Amy Muse. That would kick it right to her if we did a no change in value. However, if we were to look at your property and lower the value, and say we actually believe it is based on this review, we believe it is on whatever percentage less, we would send you that second notice. You have thirty days from the date that that notice is mailed in order to file a second appeal on that property. We will take another look at that property. If we are confident in our value at that point, we would send it again to the appeals administrator, and a hearing would be scheduled with the Board of Equalization. Then when the Board of Equalization makes their decision for us, our concern, that's it.
What if we had a private appraisal done, and they say this is your fair market value?
We will absolutely look at that. Now, by Georgia law, we do not have to accept a private appraisal. However, we will make a decision on each private appraisal that is supplied to us.
I know, that's what you used to do.
Yes sir.
So does this mean that we have to take off and work, we have to physically be there?
For the Board of Equalization hearing, the Board of Equalization, they do, they, they do say that you need to be there. However, I witnessed last year, the Board of Equalization went ahead and asked us to present our data even to them. What the Board of Equalization does at that point is far outside my domain.
Got you in line, you just say, I got you, you don't have to, I got you.
We'll make sure we visit that property.
Alright, sir in the blue, you, you got, right here, your question.
Yes sir.
Tell you one thing that bothers me about that super line coming out.
Yes sir.
I know how they're done, if we're a right way, there's trees, that's near around. I've been hearing, the last few days, I've been hearing a lot of stuff about the amount of appraisals and what it went up. Mine doubled. Also been hearing that everybody's in here didn't double. Do you know, you can go online and get some of it, and supposedly some of them only went up forty percent. People in here, and I'm not talking about just sitting out here. That's just the words been going around, people that go online. So why would somebody's go up forty, and everybody else's go up two?
Yes sir. So when we're in a mass appraisal, again, we're looking at those central tendencies. And again, we applied those central tendencies en masse. When we did, for whatever, whoever's property it was, those central tendencies did not deem an increase of any, whatever that percentage amount was. So that is when we're looking at each market segment to determine what is going on in each market segment.
Some of the property people, you mean tell me their taxes wouldn't go up as much as some of the poor people living in the room?
All increases were seen on the basis of those central tendencies and where they should have been in order to have been at the one hundred percent valuation.
Alright, sir, right, right here.
You, you say it's central tendencies.
Yes sir.
And you, you said, and y'all have been at some of these properties for ten years. And you said, good big years. But y'all spaced it on central tendencies, nobody's ever been to my property. And you based it on some, and you fair market value goes up a hundred and thirty-seven percent?
Based on.
Fair market value, that's ridiculous.
Based on properties, based on properties similar to yours, yes, that's what happened. But again, through the appeals process, we'll make sure we have the information specific to your property corrected before we move forward. Yes sir.
Alright ma'am.
If that property's appealed, I promise you, we'll make sure we get the data correct.
Yeah, and I've got them. Ms. Davy. I'll just say, I got everybody's hand, Ms. Davy's been up for quite a while. Alright, Stan. Alright, I got, I've got everybody right here.
Yes ma'am.
We publish notices in the paper every week through the legal organ. We don't have the capacity to do that at our current standards. We would have to hire an exorbitant amount of staff in order to make that possible. But if you'll come to our office, and either through the appeal period, or from January one to April one of each year and request that, I'll work with you individually to make sure that happens on your property.
Yes ma'am.
Alright, ma'am, right here.
I have a question regarding, I hear you say file an appeal, you just told the lady that you don't have the manpower. You've said that some of the properties, they haven't gone out and taken pictures in years. So, and your, your response to everybody sounds like file an appeal, file an appeal. And like they've said, some people work, some people are not able to. And you just explained to the gentleman, I think it was you, the process. So the initial appeal, July twenty-first, you sent it back to me and say, hey, no changes, I have, we have to keep going. So, explain, what is your process when you, to get to that point for the assessment? Because if you're telling them right now that you don't have the manpower to go to each property and assess, how are you going to be able to appeal? All of these, that's one. And two, some people work, or most people work, some don't have cars, and then to follow up, this is, I work, this is hard to follow up with. That's, that's another problem. So, explain to me, what is your process? I know you have a point, you know, you have all of that, but how are you, how, how does that work? Does none of that makes any sense, at all?
I, and I, I wanted to clarify that, when we said we don't have the power, we don't have the resources to call everybody and notify them, hey, we'll be on your property at such and such time. That's when I said we don't have the resources.
Right.
But we do have the sufficient resources to work these appeals, I assure you. Seventeen thousand one hundred and something. Yes sir, so we have a team of about six or seven of us.
So, exactly, so if, if you have all of these people, there is, if everyone here has one property and they file an appeal, how are you going to be able to do that?
If we have been out in that pro, if we have been to that property within the last three years, we will consider that our data on that property is accurate unless the property owner has told us differently. Now, we will seek for all those properties that have not been reviewed within the last three years. We will seek to make sure that we assess that, that we've been out to that property before we finalize this period. Now, from the date that you file your initial appeal, there is a hundred and eighty days for our office to work that, unless more than three percent of the county appeals. And then in that case, we may be able to ask for an extension of one hundred and eighty days further to notify you of that. However, our office doesn't want to go through that. We would rather make sure that we get to everybody's appeal within a hundred and eighty day window, and we want to do it much sooner than that. We are working to get to each of you as quickly as we can and process that appeal.
Next. Behind, right behind you.
Georgia law does not mandate that we accept it. However, I promise you, we're gonna consider any private appraisal that is submitted to us, and any private amount of comps. I promise you that we will look at them, yes. I will not promise that we will absolutely accept it, but I do promise you that we will consider it as part of it. It's not because of that, it's because Georgia law says that we don't have to absolutely accept it, but we will consider it as a part of each of your appeals.
That's what I'm asking you. You have a big mess here right now, okay? And if the people can come with a private appraisal, it works for them. It would save you trouble, save you a lot of work, and you'll have much happier citizens.
I affirm that we will look and consider each one of those appraisals.
Alright.
Ken, is there a way that you could open up like the city drop boxes, maybe like Freeman City Hall? And so people can actually drop their appeals and someone will bring it to you? That way folks who have to work, when they're off, they could write, fill out paperwork, do all the things, and bring it to you? Cause I know, I know there's a couple churches here that are gonna have a program to show you how to file an appeal. What process do you go through? Could they leave it at that church and bring it en masse? And you look at each one that way, that's the question.
If that appeal is filled out and signed by that property owner, or that property owner's agent, if that appeal is delivered to our office, we will consider it.
And sir, if I could just piggyback, I think that's a great idea. But you just gotta make sure that the person you're handing it to, is that, you know, that.
That's why I said the city council.
I can, yeah, I can't tell you what a city, but you know, obviously if you're leaving it at the church, it's, the, the issues, if they're actually gonna be the ones to take it up there. So I just, I would encourage everybody to the extent possible, be sure that you file your own appeal, and, and don't give it to a group of people to, to make sure that it gets there, so that you know that it did.
What are central tendencies? You keep, you keep referring to those, I don't know if you can explain, like you said, based on mass central tendencies, this is what the appraisal is? What exactly are those mass central tendencies that we're looking at to get that property back?
Yes sir. In that case, it could be different addition space, it could be looking at your square footage cost, it could be looking at what additions you've made to the house, what accessory buildings you have in a company with that house. All those property details, whatever factors are in place, those are the central tendencies. Those things that are in common among all those sale properties, finding what it took for those properties to be valued at the hundred percent level, those are what are applied en masse. And then again, through the appeals process where we look one by one.
So would that be, or the boring versus tile versus paint?
Yes sir, yes.
So you would need the data on individual home, this, this has vinyl, this has hardwood, this has the fake vinyl.
Yes sir.
So you need that information.
To make accurate appraisals.
So if people want that to you, that would help.
Absolutely.
Alright, and then I gotta come, I'm coming to, this is the order, you, Adam. You.
Okay, my stupid part question too. Like Kurt, you say it's fair market value, that's one of, that's what a property you can bring and resell it to them, what you're saying?
Yes sir.
I think if everybody here, if we talk about supplying man, sons sell their property at the value you put on it, they can bring that. You can't find that many, you can't find that many buyers. Bring, bring them all up here, bring all the buyers in here and show us that, that's fair market value. And that's not true, because if I buy a property at auction, y'all will appraise it at some value when I bought it at a public auction. That's fair market value, that's not how that works. You can call it what you want, it is what it is, it is what it is, all, all of that's it. I already forgot my saving, when that's where it's at.
Alright.
That is the question, are y'all gonna buy all of them at this price? Can you line up enough people to buy them at this price?
Since this is a, a budget meeting, would you mind going through the proposed budget and letting us know what the taxes are, like by department, gonna be spent on?
Are you asking what, what the millage rate that we're looking to adopt, is that what you're asking?
Twenty-four million dollar budget, how's that allocated out through each?
Each department?
Yeah, like, what's the sheriff get fire department wrecked, I, I would like to know that. Can, can we hear that?
And, and I do want to remind, that twenty-four four is not a final. It's a proposal, obviously, you know, the goal is to get that. The, the goal is to get that number as low as possible. So if, if we could.
Twenty, twenty-two million seven seventy.
Say that one more time.
What we're running on is twenty-two million five ninety-nine. Or, that's what we're running on right now.
I still want you to answer my question, I asked you a lot, dude. You don't have to like be quick to do any assessments, but there's two pro, two separate parcels. One's got a barn on, it's just been built, it's assessed at seventy-five. You put it on the same building on the other parcel, and have it assessed at like fifty-nine. So if you're so confident in doing what you're supposed to be doing, how is that, I mean, it's in, you can just pull it up, it's fair.
Absolutely.
I mean, and just like I said, uh, property in the suburban, the Greenland, twenty-two, twenty-one acres is sixty-three hundred dollars in acres? You mean, oh, I was like four times, I don't know. No, I have a, I have a house in Greenwood, real house, and if you do the math on it, it is forty thousand dollars. So we're, 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 you know.
Mr. Terry, can you answer, can you, can you answer that question? Do you want me to answer first?
Yeah, answer the questions, yes.
Okay.
I was in the middle. Oh, he just moved.
Can I answer that question about the book? That's something that needs to be corrected, by all means.
No, they didn't, neither. They said they want to know which one. And you can't, you can't, you, you. Yeah, but you didn't tell people what is requested. You have to talk about what we're running on the right man. Cause you don't even doctor yet.
Baby, that's twenty-five thousand dollars. So, if I've done my job like you doing, I've been in government. If I've done my job like you're doing your job.
To answer that first question.
I work a nine million dollar budget, I know what, I know how government works.
To answer that first question, again, it sounds like that's something we need to correct. On the other example that you were talking about, absolutely, that's something that we wish to correct on that property. However, since notices of assessment have been mailed, in order for us to correct that property, we need to go through the appeals process on that property in order to do that. Once we send notices, there needs to be an appeal in order for us to correct the details about that property.
But hey.
Again, once notices have been sent, we have to look at that occasion.
Hey, Adam. Adam, I think if we could answer your question, one, go ahead Brian.
Yeah, I would like to know by department, by break, you know, what, what are we spending the taxes on?
The, uh, so our paperwork for the night wouldn't buy individual department, Ms. Clerk, do you have individual totals?
Yes.
Okay, she's got the total of each budget in the county.
Again, request.
It's a proposed.
Request, not a fine.
I, I understand that.
Okay, I, I just want everybody to be on the same page.
Alright, the first one's a commission office is six eighty-two oh sixty-three. The government, which covers all of, a lot of, everything to do with insurance and audit and legal and IT, all, all that. all, all that type of thing, is one million five oh nine four fifty. Um, got two of those. Uh, board of elections is two hundred and twelve thousand three ninety-nine. Tax commissioner, four sixty-eight. Okay.
And Allison, if I'm a, these, these are published, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, if you can't, here's, if these are published, then they are available. So I, I just don't want everybody to freak out trying to catch every number that's said, so if, if you miss something, they are published.
They, they are available in our office, yes.
So if anybody would like, I mean, if, if nobody wants to sit here and listen to it, I understand, if y'all wanna get a copy of those, those are available.
What did you say for board of elections?
Board of elections, two hundred and twelve thousand three ninety-nine. Tax commissioner, four sixty-eight, five hundred and sixty. Tax assessor, five ninety-nine, six forty-seven. Board of equalization, twelve thousand one forty-six. Uh, general government and buildings is two oh eight, two oh six.
They'd add another dollar to that.
Superior court is one sixty-two, nine thirteen. Clerk of court, five forty-three, five fifty-one. District attorney, three oh eight, five ninety-one. Magistrate, two eighteen, three eighty-one. Probate court, four fifty-three, oh one one. Juvenile court, two ninety-five, nine hundred. Juvenile accountability court, which is a grant funded position, is one hundred and forty-eight thousand nine oh five. Public defender, two ninety-six, five. Sheriff's department, uh, patrol division, two million six sixty-one, four twenty-seven.
Allison, if I could, is there a way that you could total up all of the sheriff's department into one number? Is that possible to do instead of breaking it down? I just think that may be easier to understand, one number instead of what the sheriff's department receives.
Sure.
As a whole, instead of individual departments.
All right, they do have, that, that, they have several departments, so.
Or if somebody can add them up, what she calls them out, it may be faster than what I don't.
I've got the first.
And, I don't have, she may have that, but I can tell you, your fire department, your police depart- sheriff's department accounts for over half your budget. Over half of what. That's fifty-five percent of your budget.
And they give a CPIW.
No, don't.
Rate of inflation for, uh, CPIW workers Atlanta, give them that compared to the county increase, that's why I wanted to. Did you go up by the rate of inflation and that's?
No, sir, that's a, no, they have their own separate school police department that is funded by the sc- that, we don't fund that. Yeah, there was a time when there was a contract between the county to do that.
Mr. Palmer, she's, she's got the number now.
What, what?
I mean, we've got our own police officers here that should be, uh.
I know you're not gonna like the answer that I, I know you're not gonna like what I, cause I've said it before, but that's a school board decision that they made to adopt their own separate police department, separate from the county. What was the total number of the sheriff's department?
The total number of the sheriff's department involves the, the patrol unit, the jail, the court security and the drug task force, is seven million ninety-two thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Uh, the crisis response team, which is a separate entity, is one forty-one oh twenty-three. Courts are, um, let's see.
These are, these are current requests that you're going through.
Current requests.
These are not finals, these are requests.
The probation office, one twenty-eight, three oh nine. The fire department, three million nine twenty-six, four thirty-three. The coroner, fifty-nine, eight fifty-three. Nine one one. Nine one one is kind of odd. The portion that is funded by taxes is two hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-six. The basis, uh, base of nine one one, um, is funded by your, the fees that are on your phone, like any kind of phone service. That comes back to the county and that's what funds nine one one. Animal control, two eighty-four, four eighty-six. Emergency management, one hundred and fourteen thousand seven fifty-seven. Road department, two million three seventy-three, four eighty-two. Sanitation, five hundred and seventy-two thousand seven twenty-eight. Health is seven ninety-nine, eight eighteen. Public welfare, thirty-five thousand seven fifty. Senior program, forty-nine, seven sixty-eight. The transit program, two thirty-eight, seven forty-eight, half of which is refunded to us from the state. The recreation department, five thirty-seven, eight fifty. The county extension office, four H, one sixty-seven, eight oh nine. The libraries, fifty-seven thousand. We pay twelve thousand to forestry for the state. The regional commission is twenty-two thousand. Planning and zoning, three oh five, nine eighty-six. The marshal's office, one sixteen, eight sixteen. And that is it.
Somebody mentioned a percentage of last year's budget to where we're at right now. Five point three percent.
Five point three percent, CPIW last year was what?
I'll have to ask, I don't.
CPIW last year, the official rate of in- inflation and discounting for workers, what was last year?
I don't have that figure.
We don't have it.
It's published on the National Bureau of Labor Standards. I, I can look it up for you if I have to, I will.
Yeah, I, we don't have that, I, I just know how much our.
I can, I can guarantee you that. I, I don't know, but I will look it up, absolutely, but I can guarantee you, CPIW Atlanta is the number you're looking at. One point nine percent, year over year, one point nine percent, and we went five point what?
Three. Right now, right now, that's words.
Now, we have to take out for capital projects and all that other, what are you adding to the county's benefit at this point? It costs four percent of tax base.
I'd encourage you to ask your department heads to submit those budgets. Go ask Sheriff Stacy Williams what he needs that's more.
I know one of them did, I know one of them did. I don't, I don't know if the rest of them, I haven't looked around, I'm like, I'm.
I don't see him.
Yeah.
You are the guys that are in charge of this, I'm asking you, that's who I'm asking.
Yeah, we're the ones that adopt the budget, but we're not the one that tells the sheriff what to bring to us.
If you're not asking the question, why are you sitting up there, why are you?
I don't prepare the sheriff's budget, sir.
You're not asking the question, why I'm paying more than inflation and I'm not getting more than I got last year? Why are you sitting there?
I, I can tell you, I can tell you what they say. Cause I've asked the same question, why they keep raising their budget year in and year out? They say it's the price of doing business. That's exactly, now that's, now, now hey, that's not what I say.
Problem is, my price of doing business went up by officially, what, one point nine? One point nine percent, and you're saying the price of doing business is?
No, I, not, not me, that's not me.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm answering your question, yeah.
So.
The department heads, listen, the department heads are doing what they're supposed to do. They're fighting for their department, that's what they should do, you should hire people to fight for their department. You guys, you five guys are our representatives, you tell them, hey, it only went up by one point nine, and you're asking for five point three, those two numbers can't be, so get to one point nine or don't.
I agree.
Explain to me why you can't. If you come out here and tell these people that, hey, look, we gotta go up another percent because we're going to get, oh, I don't know, water on roads that we don't have water on, or more importantly, we're gonna get jobs in the county. That's more important than any other thing we're talking about right here. Get jobs in the county where people can work here to afford to live here.
That's why I put my name on the list, I own a red tread shop in Tallahassee, local, and the school or the county has not bought tires from me from oh three here.
How about that?
They go out of the county and get them.
How about that? That's, that's answered that way.
Yes, sir.
You got a real good question.
If, if I could go back to that question, is it really, I can't tell you what the school's gonna do, cause they're in different tax, uh, tax issue than we are. But, and I, and you may have been here earlier when I explained this, and, and if I have, you know, if you heard it, tell me to stop and I will.
Y'all making anything close to what Gary Vaynerchuk did?
No.
I wish. I wish.
Anybody makes that much money and does as little as what he does?
And I encourage everyone that's come out tonight to be, they have their meetings on, I don't know if you.
It's a Monday night. It's a Monday night, I just don't know.
It's a Monday night, and I, I'd have to look and see exactly, but you can look on their website. And I encourage everyone to be, should be there also.
Hey, I would, I would like to say something though. I'm pretty pissed about the taxes too, right? And, and I argue with all five of these guys up here on a regular basis. But I came to the budget meeting, the first one, about a month ago, and there was, there's only three other citizens at the meeting besides the commissioners and the clerk. And some department heads come in and they had astronomical requests, and these guys sit here and argued with them. I, I got a recording of the whole meeting, I'll send it to everybody if y'all want it. It's about seven hour long recording, and you can listen to some of your department heads arguing the reasons they were arguing for some of the stupid shit that they want to spend your tax dollars on. And then, you got a couple of department heads that have never, ever been over budget, that run their budget, have found out ways to, to cut y'all's taxes by not spending more money. Terry Oder is one of them, he's paying the same thing for gravel as he was seven, three years ago. And, and somehow still managing taking care of the dirt roads, right? But yet, this board, I don't know if it's collective or what it was, decided to tell every bu- department head to cut their budget by five percent. Well, that's horseshit, if Terry's doing his job, but you got other department heads that are not, and they're being punished, that's, that's just ridiculous. So I say all that, say this, I don't always agree with this board, and some individuals, not so much at all, but they do push to lower taxes every time. I sat on this board for about two and a half years, and we go through, I mean, I, I, they do too. Every line, there's more lines than she didn't even read, every line, line by line. And I encourage y'all to get involved and come up here and just raise hell like you're doing tonight, but do it at the budget meetings before they ever get set. But this, this, you, you're right, direct your focus to, y'all elected them, take it out on them, that's what, you know, they don't want it. They don't have to put their names on signs anymore, you know? But they are fighting to lower and, and, and try to figure out a way. Ryan's got a good question he asked the other day, he said, is your fire department worth four and a half million dollars? I'm pro-fire department, I used to be one. No, it ain't worth four and a half million dollars.
I'd like to ask that to everybody, I mean, it's y'all's tax dollars, it's my tax dollars.
Is your sheriff's department worth seven and a half million dollars? So, and, 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 and so how do we, how do we answer that, how do we answer that question?
Eleven.
And I get that, so. Do you see how there's so many, but do you see how there's so many, you see how there's so many caveats to, to answer just that question?
All right.
You know, so there's, there's so many ways to answer that question and be wrong about answering it. We gotta have fire department, we gotta have sheriff's department. But who do you tell no, and, and I mean, what do we do? Man, I wish everybody in here would run for office, that'd be great.
Unfortunately, the sheriff's department is a, he's a constitutional officer. So if he wants it, basically he gets it. Uh, we don't have any, a lot of control over what the sheriff does. The fire department, I'm sad to say that we do have, uh, something to do with that, so we're gonna, we're working with them hard and, uh, trying to get them numbers way down as far as the budget goes, but the sheriff's department is a, it's a, it's a little different animal. We, we don't, we don't control.
Cause I, I've got friends and they're telling me that the county and the city of Tallahassee is overcharged ponder tremendously, and now you are having to go back and try to, uh, wake up these citizens.
I've never heard that. Have you never heard that?
Not the county.
I've never heard that.
Not the county.
I did hear a big, big business was trying to come in here and was basically, wouldn't you help them? And roughly went to the next county.
I can promise you that's not true.
No, not at all.
I can promise you, I've been here for four years, that is not true. I've, I, I promise you.
Yes, sir.
I signed up to speak, but it doesn't, don't look like we're gonna ever get to that.
I don't think we ever got to the list, so go ahead.
Don't look like we're gonna get to that clipboard, but now that we're talking money, I just want these people to know, cause I got a little bit of information I think that a lot of people don't know, is that last year, the county bought twenty-five hundred acres at a cost of six and a half million dollars.
That's inaccurate.
It's inaccurate.
No, it's not.
Sixteen hundred acres.
And it's six and a half million dollars.
Six and a half million dollars, that's correct.
So.
It was sixteen, sixteen hundred acres at six and a.
Sixteen hundred acres, that makes it even worse.
But we did not use a dollar of your tax.
And if I could just go.
Not one dollar.
If I could go to where I think this question is.
All that money, we can prove where it come from, it was ARPA money that was left over, it was sploshed.
Could that money not have been spent somewhere else in the county?
Hold on, cause I wanna answer this question.
That land is being used for hunting property for about a half dozen dudes.
If, if you'll give me one second, because I really wanna answer this question for you. I ran for office four years ago. When I ran for office, there was one big issue in this county. There was a landfill that was looking to come here, and that was the property that it was on. And when I ran for office, every single person that I talked to in my community, aside from asking me to get their roads paved, asked me to stop that landfill. And so you wanna know why that property was purchased? It was to stop that.
I understand that, I know that. That's, that's not a mystery, that was a, that was an industry looking to come to this, this city.
When you're talking about the other businesses coming in, now that we own a piece of property, I. There's so much that we can say, all I can tell you is there are very promising prospects, but I, I just cannot, if I could leave it at that. The county owns that property. We, we purchased everything on that piece of property, it's, it's, right now, it's county, we don't have it set for like a, let, let's need you to talk after.
So what I can tell you right now, you talking about this land? I just let you know, this, we have been offered for six hundred acres, six point five million. That's in, right now is all we know, cause our development authority is the one that does things like that for us. I can tell you that's.
Investment that your county made?
No.
No.
So if you wanna know what your county did, your county bought a piece of property for six. We're turning ourselves. It come from several entities. Don, I've, I've got the list somewhere, but I don't have it with me, but not one dollar of your tax dollar was spent to buy that property.
What, your property taxes, none of that.
A general fund, that's, that's still tax money.
Yes, but I think, there's a.
The county doesn't.
It come from ARPA funds, it, it come from several different places, what was left over.
It is, but there's.
It is, but it's.
It, it came from your splosh dollars, it could have been a dollar that you paid. It could have come from somebody that paid out of Atlanta that stopped at the pilot station.
It didn't come from your property taxes.
It's tax dollars.
No, I said tax dollars. It was money that was given to the county. It was money that was given to the county.
All right. Hang on.
Come on, people.
Come on, that's, I've got some more hand, hands, go ahead Jeremy, then you.
Well, first off, you can either have a landfill or spend six and a half million dollars, that's the easy choice, I don't give a shit where the money came from. So, second off, with the appeals that everybody's apparently gotta file, whenever those are filed, you got a hundred and eighty days to go through them, dah dah dah. Well, we pay our taxes for this year, what is it gonna be based off of? Last year's, or it gonna be based off the current year, and then it's a refund if it's appealed?
Would be based on the current year and a refund if it was under appeal.
Okay, second question, the central tendencies, is that like a software program that you're plugging all of this in and it fits out a number?
That's looking at those different property characteristics, yes.
So is there, have anybody looked into that to see if there's a flaw in it? Because where I've got, so I'm a building in Bremen.
Yes.
And the property directly next door to it, we spoke last. And the property directly next door to it, we spoke last year, is valued at two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, it's two hundred square feet bigger and built out exactly the same, at the same time. Mine's valued at six hundred thousand dollars, and they were done the exact same year, exact same build out.
Yes.
So, if you've got that program that's putting out these numbers, clearly, it's, something's wrong.
So that, that program has been in use in Iber County since I believe nineteen ninety-two.
Probably need to update it.
Well, they, I, to, to credit, to credit that software, they do regular updates e- every single year. Um, to, to better answer your question in terms of that commercial property, I understand, there's a lot of our commercial properties we continue to look at regularly, and I, I'm well aware of that issue, and, and working with you and with others on that issue to make sure those matters are resolved. And that's a lot of these property characteristics that we're looking at. When you file an appeal, we make sure we get these things right on those properties, same deal as you and I discussed last year, I won't go in details, that's yours to share with. But I looked into those details to make sure we had that property information correct, and upon each of your appeals, we promise to do the same with each of them.
But, and this year mine went up.
You're next, and then.
Yes.
And the one next door went up twelve thousand.
I, again, that, that's a detail I'm gonna have to look at on both of those properties.
Alright. Jer, I gotta go here.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
I got it.
Yes, ma'am.
So, first of all, thank y'all for having me. Second of all, you were talking about this, um, six point five million dollar purchase, and then you're able to recoup that. Will that trickle down to our, our county budget where our taxes are reduced because we are?
So, that would be decision to this board, once this happens. Who knows when it's gonna happen? But some of this money's been designated to our new county government complex that.
Hold on, Brian, hold on. Don, if I could, and correct me if I'm wrong on this.
That was in the, in the pre.
You, you asked specifically about the six and a half million dollars. That was, and, and what, I think some of the, the discussion that we had, um, the issue we had is, yes, it is tax dollars, but your county taxes, that, that, what you pay that eight percent, or that eight mil rate that we were talking about earlier, you know, that is a, a different pocket of money than splosh dollars. Those splosh dollars, which is what, regardless if you live here, or you live in the state of Texas, and you're driving through, you stop at the pilot station, or whatever, and you buy something, you contributed to that splosh fund. So, i- i- the answer in that question is no, because that's not where that money came from. That came from splosh dollars as well as federal funds. Obviously, when COVID happened, the federal government turned on and started printing a lot of things, but that's where a, a large portion of that. It, it doesn't, you're, yes, you're, because, because we are not legally allowed to take splosh dollars, for instance, and, and pay sheriff's deputies salaries. We're, we're, we are not allowed to do that.
I gotta follow up a question on that, I gotta follow up a question on that.
Yes.
Don't take splosh funds and pay for other salaries that are covered around the budget.
We, we're not legally allowed.
Splosh funds laid out for a, I don't know, an animal shelter, or a recreation department with a, with, with a gym, or whatever, and the county road department does the grading and provides all this other stuff. They got paid for that, or did they get paid out of the expense money, not the salary money?
You can't pay salaries out of splosh.
I don't know.
When, when, when a spot, when you vote for the splosh, when, when you vote for the splosh, inside that referendum that you click yes or no, when you go to the ballot, it tells you everything that that money can be used for.
It tells me how it can be used.
Correct.
It doesn't tell me when the county does the grading, when the road department that we already paid for and work on the roads, does the grading for that particular project. Where did that money go? Because when you, when, when I do a, when I do a capital budget for a project, I gotta figure out the cost of property, I gotta figure out the cost of grading, I gotta figure out the cost of all of this. But yeah, I can, I, I have this grading crew over here that's doing nothing today, even though they're supposed to be doing something else. I can bring them over here and put them to grading for these projects, where did that money go to? I gotta account for that, because if I use this crew that's not accounted for this over here for this, and I use that money for something else, that's a problem.
When we do, when we do big projects like that, uh, when the county typically does big projects like that, it's got an outside entity that controls all that. You know, just like, I mean, a, a contractor, just like Jerry. Yes, yes, so they, they take care of all that. We don't use govern, we don't use county.
That's not true, on those projects, I'm asking about the county did the grading on those projects, I saw.
Which one?
I ride them down there every day, and, and I'm going back, this was before y'all's time, I wanna make sure this is understood. Cause Ryan Walker brought, I asked for the line item numbers for those projects, he brought me these big nebulous numbers. I didn't get the line item numbers. What I told him was, I wanna see how much gravel went on his job, I wanna see who got paid to do the grading, I wanna see who got paid to do, got paid for the real estate. The real estate for that wreck department over there was bought, and animal shelter somehow appeared on this project. But those are two separate splosh funds. I know I'm talking back, that was the last time I was up here, I was asking these questions, I didn't get good answers. I'm not gonna stop till I get good answers, that's for sure.
That's exactly why the county shouldn't act as a general contractor, cause just like Lawana said, they don't buy tires from her, so they're cutting the grading contractor out that has the businesses in the county.
You're almost saying correct, that's the question I'm asking.
They think they're saving money, but they're really screwing the businesses here.
We paid for it twice, is what he's saying, is what I'm saying, I'm saying it up, I'm saying it up front, we paid for it twice. We paid for the road department to do road work, they need to be doing road work. And I'm gonna be honest with you, of all the county departments I have any dealings with, the road department's the best.
By far. By far, by far.
Hey, ma'am. Ma'am. Hang on, let's let this lady.
Oh, there were a bunch of blueberries. So, we have a person, our, our home, we have a gated entrance, nobody came in there, it's four hundred thousand dollars worth tax than it was last year. So we know nobody came there, that, you know, to come in and look at it, we should have held in due four hundred thousand dollars worth of upgrades on it. So I'm still, you, you say appeal it, but we're gonna appeal it, of course, but we're still waiting for the appeal we did four months ago, the appeal.
Yes, ma'am.
Now it's been done, she told me that it's been done, but we don't have no deal.
Yes, ma'am. On those, the gentleman that was handling and working the mobile home appeals, he has actually got about twelve of them left, he told me this afternoon, he's been working diligently. Had a situation where we had some staff change over, and he took over on that person's behalf, and he's been working diligently to get those cleaned up, and you should have one by tomorrow. If not, give me a call, I'll work it out.
I, I've lived here for twenty-five years, and I have an eighty-six foot, sixteen foot porch added to my unit.
Yes, sir.
I got the same thing I've had for the last twenty-five years. And why did, why did they all of a sudden add all these porches on to all these double lots and stuff?
Yes. It, and it was, it was, and we have, we have worked to correct that too. Yes, sir. So we, we have worked diligently to correct that situation. Again, my sincere apologies, that's not been handled. We're working, and we've got all but a handful of those left, and we'll have that to you tomorrow.
It'll be nice.
And y'all say it's off, I don't know, they don't tell me whether it's off on my thing, and they don't, and they don't tell her whether it's off.
Yes.
I say it's off, but how do we know that it's off? And I'm not gonna trust you with what, after what y'all've done to my house, I'm not gonna trust you, I.
Yes.
You need to tell me, and you need to tell all of us people in the county, you need to write it out on paper, that what we, what we're paying for.
Yes, sir. Come in and request what is called a property record card, and we will get that to you.
I done have.
Did you receive that property record card?
I've already protested mine, me and my daughter both did.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I gave my daughter an acre and a half of land, and they said last year it was worth five thousand dollars, and this year it's worth thirty seven thousand.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd have to check the specific details of that property.
Uh, yes, okay, there are titles.
Yes, ma'am.
This computer programmed mine's office.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That, uh, information is available to you, yes, sir, that was adopted by the Board of Assessors in May of this year, and yes, sir, that is all. Those property tax tables you can request through our office.
I believe there's a lady back there in the back that I saw her hand go up, yes, ma'am.
And then, here and here.
I wanna know how we should have to appeal our houses when you haven't kind of looked at them. My, my, my property has not been looked at since twenty nineteen, and it went up, almost tripled this year, and nobody's looked at my property. The only thing I have done to my property is put a bird finger and painted some sunflower seeds, and y'all said my property went up to over a hundred thousand dollars on a twenty-three year old mobile home on an acre wide.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So, when can I expect somebody to come look at my property, and why, why does all the elderly people, let me speak about that. Why and how are they supposed to print stuff off or get here? First of all, some of, most of them are disabled, and, and my line of work, I know, cause they come to my work, how are they supposed to get up here to appeal something? How, why are you upsetting these people, these elderly people who built this type county? I, I know, I moved seven years ago here, and I can promise you, if I could sell my property for what you or whoever looked at it, I'd be out of here.
Come on!
I'd be out of here, man, out of here.
Oh, oh, oh.
How y'all put down, over home and buildings?
Yes.
Buildings. How, I need you to tell me how much each one of those buildings were.
Yes, sir, with the property record card, we'll show you what we have each of those valued at.
On, on my tax, I mean, just as a bill?
Yes, sir.
That's a nice thing, I have to build, when I'm falling in, is that gonna cost me, I mean, the interest coming, wouldn't even give me five hundred dollars.
Yes, ma'am. We'll get that corrected on, uh, through the appeal, we promise you that.
So I have to appeal?
Yes, ma'am, if there's any changes to be made on your property at this point, that will have to go through the appeals process.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've got you, and I gotta get here.
That was the data that we already had in the system, if you're telling us you have the right every year between January one and April one to tell us something is wrong with my property, and we'll take a look at it.
So the, the order I need to go in is one, two, and three, and then four. Come on, hang on, everybody, listen to this gentleman, Mr. Ma.
No, sir.
No, sir.
No, sir.
No, sir.
Not for your county, not, not for your county and or city purposes, if you live in a city.
Alright.
Yes, sir.
You, and then, Mr. Free.
Sixteen hundred. Sixteen hundred, I've changed that.
When was it bought? To.
Cause that's a four thousand dollar valuation, can I use?
Two-ish years ago.
On my acreage, if that's four thousand dollars on the acre tax, would use that as a comp, does the county purchase it?
You can supply that as a comparable, however, the state of Georgia will not allow us to consider that as a fair market transaction, because it was a government entity that purchased it. Whether I, whether I agree or disagree with that, state of Georgia won't let me consider that as a fair market sale.
So is there a civil way to have something on the ballot that says taxes assessed value will increase two to three percent, which is the historic average of Georgia?
Well, that's what five eighty-one does, that, that, that's, and, and I, I saw you come in later, that, that's what that, that, that's what that House Bill five eighty-one does. So what I was explaining earlier, that twenty twenty-four va, let's talk after.
Nine point one million dollars, nine point one million dollars.
Based off of last year's or this current one?
That, I think that's estimated for this year, is that correct?
The current year we're in, the current, the current budget year.
Current budget we're in.
Budget, you're not.
Current budget year, not, what's coming out of this, this. There's no numbers yet.
There, there's no number?
How many you building permits have y'all issued in this county in the last two years?
That department's not here, sir, I don't know.
I know.
Of a lot of houses that are five hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars, it ought to be offset in the budget.
Yes.
And more importantly, have you increased the water supply to cover that number of building permits, cause won't we gotta sand back the river again?
No, no, Zane.
Yeah. Sir?
My question is, could someone speak on what the county was fine last year for property tax issue?
You're talking about not being within the range, the ratio issues?
Ratio issue.
Hold on, hold on.
That, that has been something that has been being published wildly that is not accurate. Our office has not been punished or penalized for failing ratio studies.
That's right. That's right.
Get, get with me and tell me who that was, because that needs to be corrected.
I was not.
We have not been fined in, in many years, it, it's been ten or twelve years ago was, we were fined one time, but we have not paid any.
I was in a class, uh, just some time ago, and I actually messaged her and asked her what the, where our sales ratio number, it was, uh, thirty-six point nine. Anything below thirty-six, you start getting, uh, penalized five dollars per, uh, you can be penalized five dollars per parcel that's not up to snuff, so. Well, I'm not talking about to buy the land, I'm just talking about that's the fine. But anyway, to answer your question, uh, you know, I don't know about this coming up here as of, as of now, that we were above the threshold for that to, to be getting fined.
So it wasn't?
No, sir, no, sir. Yes, sir, yes, sir, yes, sir.
But I was told differently, cause I'm the one that told you, I'm the one that told you that, because I was told by the chairman of the Board of Assessors. I ain't got no reason to.
Alrighty, hey, uh, Amy Muse is here to talk about the Board of Equalization.
I love Zach, and you know what, it's taken a lot since he's been here, and I think, I think he deserves to be treated with respect. Absolutely, including myself, including myself, but I think, um, on a personal level, I think Zach deserves my respect, I'm gonna give him. Well, I'm not up here to talk about my relationship with Zach.
Hi.
I, I'm not up here to talk about my relationship with Zach, on a professional and a personal level, I like Zach. I am also upset about my property taxes with my husband and my mother-in-law, because we own a, quite a bit of land. But I also will do my due diligence and file an appeal.
So our appeal comes out, you, is that what that?
No, that's what I'm here to explain. You appeal to the tax assessor's office, and if you do not agree with what you, in result with him, you can appeal to the Board of Equalization.
Oh, it goes to him first?
Yes.
And then he decides?
Well, I don't know how his office does it, but if you don't agree with the in result with them, it comes to the Board of Equalization.
Sign me up, Amy.
Yes, so, that's why I'm here. The Board of Equalization is a board full of independent taxpayers, all like you. I have three board members, and of everybody in the, in the county, I have three board members who are on the board. The board can have multiple boards, in other words, three board members, three alternates. I could have another board, three board members, three alternates. I have one board with three members, no alternates. So when my taxpayer, when my Board of Equalization go to appeal their taxes, and if it comes to the Board of Equalization, there, there is no board, cause you have to have three.
I, I, I'll go on to here right now.
You have to have three. Well, that's what I'm here to do, sir, is give you, um, the qualifications, you have to apply, I have applications in my office, come to the clerk's office.
I'll come to the clerk's house tomorrow.
It tells you here how to become a board member, and what qualifies you, and what would disqualify you. You do have. No. But you, um, and there was somebody, I was, I had a meeting to go to, so I was trying to listen to this online. Somebody asked, they work full-time and if hours are from nine to five, if you, if your appeal goes to the Board of Equalization, it is from eight to seven P.M. So you could hear your, you could have an appeal that's heard after hours. Oh, no, it's a separate, it's separate. Yes, ma'am, I set them. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanna make sure I got enough, uh, vacation to cover being there.
As many appeals, we'll set them out. I've had them sometimes go from DC- Well, no, you don't have to quit your job.
He's talking about with all these appeals this year.
That's where we at, but you know what? I've, I've, I've spoke up right here. I'm willing to put up. Let's do it.
Um, the clerk's office, I have the applications and I have this, these information right here if you guys want some. We, we, we love volunteers like you, but you, it, the caveat is you have to do a training. These independent taxpayers have to have training.
Let the lady speak.
Let her speak.
Come on, people, let the lady speak.
These independent taxpayers on the board have to have training. Your first training is forty hours. Forty hours. It can be online. It can be, um, in person. Right now, the, the Department of Revenue sets these trainings. Right now, the only trainings are in Atlanta or you do it online. Either way. Um, after you do your first forty hours, every year after that is eight hours. So you still have continuing education, so you also are aware of what, what your, what your boundaries are, what you're set to hear when you hear hearings. So I would welcome everybody, every one of you. I, we're there, we're one of the counties who, who has only three members. There are counties all over the state, a hundred and fifty-nine counties, and some of them have four boards. Full, each board is three members, three alternates. Yes, ma'am.
Guys, I know there's been a lot of questions asked tonight, and obviously there's not a lot of answers that I think people are gonna like. Thank you, Amy, that, that, that everybody's gonna like the answers. But I would like to tell everybody, you know, thank y'all for coming out, you know, like, like Adam said. You know, when we had our budget meeting, there's only three people that showed up. So I appreciate y'all coming out. Um, y'all elected us. We're answerable and responsible to y'all, so I appreciate y'all coming out tonight.
Well, I'd like to say that I'm not upset with this board. We're here. I'm here as your mercy to not raise the mill wa, mill rate.
And when I ran for office, I pledged to not raise the millage rate, and I'm not gonna raise your millage rate. I will not raise your millage rate. I'm gonna lower, to the extent possible that I can lower your taxes, I will, but I can promise you, I will not raise your taxes.
No, we don't know. We don't know that yet, ma'am.
Ma'am, ma'am, we, we had a really good question in terms of can you email that appeal form in? Yes, we do accept electronic appeals. The email address for that, for anybody that wants to write it down, or if you just wanna go to the Harrelson County Q public website, it is posted there as well. That is assessors. Yes, ma'am. Says assessors at harrelsoncountyga.gov, and we'll accept it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Part, part two, how do you value land? I got three acres. You're valuing it at thirty thousand dollars an acre. Where does that come from?
Yes.
And don't, look, everybody that you, you say do an appeal, and that's their, that's your answer. That's chicken shit because you're counting on people to, that's not doing appeals, to have to pay triple of what the crap they're supposed to pay. Yeah, so how do you, how do you answer that?
Yes, sir. So we would look at all the essential property characteristics of each of those properties and see how they were valued at. In terms of land valuation, we would look at that specific tract of land and determine what was used in order to value that land.
Let me, let me tell you what the deal was with mine. My, as Zach was saying, properties were undervalued. My, my house was valued at eighty thousand dollars last year, okay? It went up to two hundred and thirty-four. I felt like that was a fair assessment of my house. I live in a modest house. This is a brick house, it's thirteen hundred and something square feet. It's not big. So I, I, I felt like that was, I felt like that was a, a fair assessment. So that's where my hundred and forty percent came from. Now, I will say that I bought two point six acres of land in Waco. I give seventeen, oh, I, excuse me, I give twenty thousand dollars for it about nine months ago. It was valued at seventeen thousand dollars, and I got a tax bill this year for sixty-six thousand dollars. So I don't, I don't understand that, and I've, and I went to file an appeal with Zach, and he told me, you know, we'll look at it and see what's what.
You shouldn't have to file an appeal. He's counting on people that are not filing an appeal.
Well, no, I don't think that's true. I think, it's just, it's just part of the, it's just part of what we're going through. This is, and we're gonna get over the hump, just, just-
But why are we going through it?
Well- Because of stuff that happened in the past, to be honest with you.
But two years ago was when the house market was right.
It's not, it's not that. Listen, I, I really, we've got so many properties that hadn't been reevaluated in years and years and years, and that's what caused this, because of the people that was in here later. Zach's not the cause of this. He's gonna be the savior of it sooner or later.
And he's catching on.
Nothing ever goes down, I mean, we're not, we're not done.
Hang on, hang on a second. Hang on a second. Hang on.
I don't have him with me, no, sir, but if you want to, I can get you some.
Yeah. We can, we can get the appeal form, forms to hand out as we discern. Hang on. Hang on. Speak up, sir.
And so I don't know where it's come from. And there's been effort to do it, and it's been going on there since I've lived here. I've lived from Alpham, very low property taxes. It's impressive what we're having right now, and we need a tax break somehow. You can't do this in one year where you're just gonna throw it all on us and have a hundred percent or two percent increase. But I don't know what we gotta do. I don't know all the laws, and I appreciate everyone. You have one of us, my brother.
I'll make the guys that's good for me.
The biggest issue with this county is there's no water supply. You can't high水in this country. You don't get any stream in here. You offset the taxes. You're all about big burdens. That's the real issue with this county. And until something changes there. We had a reservoir that soon got filled. Shut it down, but until that happens, nothing's gonna change in this county, right?
That's the truth.
You're right.
Yes, sir.
It's gonna be as a property development for somebody in Atlanta. They're gonna let all these people who've been here for hundreds of years, all, eighteen sixty census, direct cen, direct descendant on eighteen sixty census in Harrelson County. I won't be able to afford to live here, even working, if this continues.
Yes, sir.
That's the truth.
My house, it came out, not you, but your, Zach says it came out three years ago. Because I filed an appeal because it was seventy-seven to ninety-six. It was brought down four thousand to ninety-two. So I paid that that year. The next year, which was last year, it came down four more thousand without me even filing an appeal. When I got my assessment this year, it went up to two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And two hundred and twenty-five thousand was the, uh, improvements. It just says improvements. There's no list.
Yes.
The only thing I've done is bought a water heater.
Yes, yes. So, we, to be clear, when it says, when it says improvements, that's whatever is on top of the land, whatever that is. The improvements just refer to your house or accessories or such as that. When you're reading that on a notice of assessment, that's what it is, is whatever is on your land is considered the improvements. Doesn't necessarily mean you've built something new. It just means that it is the improvements that are upon that land. That's where that comes from.
So, so how did it go? What did you, you, y'all came out two features, three years ago?
Yes, sir.
And then also my improvements value went up triple?
Yes, sir. We, again, we looked at the replacement cost of things. We looked at depreciation schedules. We also looked at land. Now, that wasn't your specific question, but we looked at all three of those parts last year.
Okay, but the depreciation, is that from nineteen seventy-six when it was built? It's been in the same family.
Depreciation, again, is any loss in value in the market ultimately concludes what that number is. Sometimes a neighborhood or an area, whatever the may be, is, it's selling for ten percent less than what it is in other areas of the county. And we'll apply a modifier which lessens that amount on your property accordingly.
Okay, so my house, assuming it sold for three hundred thousand last year because they got a nice brand-new paved seeping driveway, and they ripped all the cubs out and totally refurbished it all. It's not the same as my house. It's virtually the same for the last fifteen, no improvement.
Yes, a, a, and I will understand that, and the depreciation of your home needs to be looked at in that accord. We will.
Sixteen hundred and seventy-five.
Yes, we'll look at it with, we'll look at it with-
Alright, sir.
Hopefully, we got some of it sold.
Hang on a second. I'll let this guy ask his question.
Software is part of it, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So we use what, we use the software that is used by over one hundred and fifty counties throughout the state of Georgia. That is called the Wind Gap software.
Just a heads up for everybody how serious this could be. There is a real estate, there's a bunch of real estate courses you can take online and stuff. They got a lot of real estate flipping on that. One of the strategies that are taught is when people go to front on their taxes, other people can come in, buy the land, get first position, and actually take your house from you. And they can do it legally as long as you don't pay with them, usually a nine-month window. I got people, I know people who do this.
One year, one day. One year, one day.
Please take this serious. Do whatever we gotta do for you and your home. I, I mean, I got an elderly mom who's one on here and couldn't make it. And so, she just, I, I want everybody to be aware that is a real estate, that is a thing that can happen to your home, to your parents' home, to your properties. That investors from Atlanta or wherever, California, could come in and do that too. So be aware of that, and whatever, even if the taxes don't go the way we want, I know Zach's gonna work for you. I mean, you, I wouldn't wanna beat you right now, to be honest with you. So if we know it's gonna work for you, just do the process to make sure you're not one of those people, and whatever it takes, as a community, just come together.
And I would make sure, just to add, you know, if you, if you do not, if you've not filled out a homestead exemption, you need to fill out a homestead exemption or make sure that your property is in homestead.
Yes.
That is going to make a huge difference in what your assessed, what your assessed value you're taxed on. If you're not in a homestead, House Bill five eighty-one, we talked about earlier, is not going to help. You have to be homesteaded.
Hey! Alrighty. Okay, uh, so all the questions has been answered, or tried to be. I wanna thank, hang on.
Hold on, just call it and we can, we can answer some questions afterwards.
We-
One question.
Hang on, right here. Please, let this gentleman ask his question.
Let, let me answer that question. So, and, and you may have come in late. I've, I've said it a couple times, and I apologize. I know a lot of people have heard this for the fourth or fifth time. That House Bill five eighty-one that I talked about, the county taxes, I don't know if you live in a city, but if all the, the county and every city opted into this. So by us opting into this, your assessed value that you're gonna be taxed on in this coming tax year is whatever your value was in twenty twenty-four. Assuming you're in a homesteaded property, this does not apply to commercial properties, but assuming you're in a homesteaded property, you filed your homestead exemption. The, 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 i- if your home went from a hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred thousand, this year you're only taxed on a hundred and fifty thousand. It's not going up to four hundred thousand. Yes, and in the future, that's what that bill is designed to do, is to protect from this exact issue. And so it will only incrementally increase. You can probably expect a two to three percent increase. That's not a number that the county sets. That is something that is set by inflation data, but I would imagine that that you can expect a two to three percent increase from your twenty twenty-four ta, from your twenty twenty-four assessed value moving forward. Now, of course, when you sell that property for four hundred thousand, the new buyer doesn't get the benefit of what it was in twenty twenty-four. They pay taxes on what they bought it for. But then it starts over again. So they, again, if it goes from four hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand the year after they buy it, it's only on that property. That's why it's very important for everybody to make sure that you were in a homesteaded piece of property or you have filed for your homestead exemption. Now, having said that, the school system opted out of that, so I don't have control over their millage rate. So for that question, they opted out of it. So yes, that new value that you have, that, that is gonna be the value for the school system, but it's not gonna be the value that you pay for this millage rate for your county and/or city. Can you appeal your value? He's the value person for the entire county. It's, it's the one, it's the one appeal. It's not separate appeals.
There, and then back here in the back.
The value, the assessed value. Let's just say. No, no, because you're working off of last year's value, not this value. Yes, yes. That's why I'm trying, yeah, so when you see, if you saw your property go from a hundred thousand to a million, you're doing the taxes on the hundred thousand moving forward. You, you, so, yeah. Yes, sir. For that homesteaded property.
A homestead.
That's what I- For the homesteaded property, yes, yes. Believe it's a house, is it a house and an acre? That's a house and an acre. Yes. Yes. Well, and I would, the only thing that I would counter to that is the majority of folks that probably do own fifty to a hundred acres or any sizable piece of land, most likely have that in conservation. So there's other tax protections outside of that homestead exemption, such as conservation, so you don't have that issue. I wish I wrote the laws in Atlanta. I, I don't, I don't-
Somebody please explain this, make it make sense. I'm not asking questions that I don't, I, I, I mean, maybe I'm being unread. Maybe so. I don't know.
No, sir, I understand the question.
The board right here because, but I know you guys have no control over this. I understand that. You're limited what you- I was wrong for the board right here because, but I know you guys have no control over this, I understand that, you're limited what you can do, they're limited what they can do, everybody's limited and nobody has a solution. Who is the solution? Is it us? Cause if that's the case, I don't think, I don't think any of us like what comes next. Yes, you are correct, we are the solution.
You are. Thank you. One more question, back here in the back, and then we'll be adjourning. Ma'am?
I was just, uh, in regards to what you've been talking about all night, I just wanted to point out with my research that I've done, um, I think that Harilson County Commissioners did their due diligence by, uh, not opting out, unlike the school board who did opt out, which is why you're seeing such an increase. So even though everyone's able to, um, do the, um, assess, the appeal on their assessment, I don't think it's gonna change unless we can figure out what to do with the legislation that was passed that caused this in the first place, which is how schools play their role. So, um, I think everyone should probably go to the school board for sure.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
The assessments are gonna help this year as far as everybody doing their, their, getting it to balance out for what you owe on your taxes, but I think in the long run, they're gonna hit everybody next year because it's the state, not the county that's doing this, just for sure.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright.
Today, we entered just past a thousand appeals so far. We have not reached three, we have reached over three percent, yes, I don't have the percentages. We're in a three percent in terms of that has appealed, so we could extend it a hundred and eighty days, however, I, I promise you this, I will work tooth and nail. This staff will tell you, I don't work an eight to five day, I have not once worked an eight to five day on this job. I will not continue to work an eight to five day, I will always work more, and I will work tooth and nail to make sure we don't have to enter into another hundred and eighty day period. I can't guarantee it, but I promise you, I will work tooth and nail to that end.
I'm, I'm not having anybody in there, but I will support you on that, I showed up an hour before the office opened and you were there forty minutes before that office opened, I give you that, you did that.
Yeah, absolutely. There's my second part of what you just said, seventeen thousand rest roughly parcels in this county, correct? And you say that you do assessment and visit, you want one every three years?
We're supposed to be there once every three.
So if you take three years, that's a thousand ninety-five days, seventeen thousand five, that's seventeen hundred parcels a day you gotta visit, it ain't gonna happen, cuz.
That's, again, where we express that, we've been. We've been, a, and I want. I'm, I want to stress, I want to stress again, we are required.
It's ten days worth of parcels.
He says a visit every three years, three hundred and sixty-five days is a thousand ninety-nine days. So you take the seventeen divided by eleven hundred.
That's seventeen a day, basically.
Seventeen.
If you're working seven days a week, yeah.
Yes, and I, I want to say again, because I just do wanna brag on my staff, I have a wonderful staff that works with us, and the field staff has reached over sixty-two percent of the parcels in Harilson County, Georgia, in the last year and a half. I cannot answer for anything before January of twenty twenty-four, but the staff that we have, we have reached well over the numbers we were already supposed to reach, we will continue to work diligently to that end.
Thank you, Zach, thank everybody for coming out tonight, be safe going home, please reach out if you have any more questions, I'll try to answer anything I can. I promise.